I'd like to call it to order the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council, Thursday, April 4th through 2019. It's our tradition to open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence, which will be led tonight by Councilperson Amy Aller.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and just with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Michelle, roll call.
Councilperson Aller.
Present.
Councilperson Azar.
Present.
Councilperson Croson.
Present.
Councilperson DeBon.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Here.
Councilperson Morris.
Here.
Councilperson Nasser.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Eight are present, one is absent.
Thank you. Mr. DeBon asked that I say that he is going to be here, but he had a business obligation that will make him a little late. We now, a portion of our meeting, we allow 30 minutes for public comment on issues which are not on our agenda this evening. If that is confusing to you, there are agendas up here on the front queue, which you're welcome to take a copy. So right now, we will just hear comments on things that we will not be considering later in the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less, so that others in the audience will have a chance to make a comment if they so choose. So if you would like to, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Donald Hyde, Level 14, Lynn Popple Street. I was going to talk about a few other things on my mind, because you only get three minutes these days, and there are so many things to talk about, but I'm going to talk about a meeting I attended where the mayor's candidates were there. And this, I'm talking to the city council floor, because you guys are going to have a next shot at it, and I hope you don't make the mistake they did. Gentlemen, when you're coming to a meeting and you're going to campaign for any office, you need to go to that meeting with, in your mind, something you really believe in. Then you need to ask yourself, okay, what does the people need at this time? And what could I do about it? And all that's already in your brain before you ever sit down at the podium to talk and even name yourself. And I campaigned for it, and I know what I'm talking about. You don't show up and not answer the questions. And when you do try to answer the questions, you do it in a clear voice where people can understand what you're saying. Now, they made a few good points, the two people that I probably will not see after the primaries, but they didn't explain it well. And the sad thing is, it's one of the things that this county and this city needs help doing a lot in. They brought out the point, but they didn't explain it well, so I'll explain it more. We're tearing down a lot of homes. We're condemning them, and we're tearing them down, and I have watched myself in the last five, six years especially, and really, since this century began, them tearing down perfectly good homes. Now, they may have a problem here or there, but they would not be that hard to repair. And the city council could pick up on sale, because I open up the paper and I read the case, and I don't memorize it, but I read it, glanced at it, and there are some of these tax sales where people could pick up a house, like the city council, for $1,000. $1,000 to have a house. Now granted, a lot of repairs done. Now, we have, I used to be able to say five colleges, now we're down to four. Again, we're shrinking. But the bottom line is, these four colleges we have, every one of them has a degree, a master's degree, in building, construction, technical thing especially. Ivy Tech, that's the whole college is reason for existing. Now, these students need one thing. When I was in the Boy Scouts, the number one thing I had to do was make sure that the kids went camping and could put in a tent right, and they knew how to do stuff. And the number one thing they had to do was practice. And you can get semi-cheap labor, you might even get some people wanting to toss in a little extra money for the materials, to go and repair some of these homes. And then once you have them repaired and livable in, you could go around and you could wipe out, in this county, the homeless. But you don't do that. There are a lot of homeless people here, there are homeless veterans, homeless on hard time, but the biggest problem with the homeless is family members are in drug problems, or they were in drug problems, and now they can't get this kind of assistance or that kind of assistance. Again, that's the city council, that's the county council, and that's the state of Indiana. That's never a conversation. But the bottom line is, there are more and more people, because of the Great Recession, that fall in the homeless category. And it's really easy to do this. And I'm sorry, that's what you're doing. You're turning your back to the problem. You won't address the problem, you won't even talk about the problem. And the problem is getting worse. This gentleman pointed that out, that a lot of homes he knew were being torn down, he knew there was only one or two minor things that would be easier to repair them. I go by hundreds of them on my bicycle, and I, when you're on an apartment, you breeze by. You're on a bicycle, you're pedaling by, you look over there, man. And another one problem in our community now, that all you people are condemning houses for, or will be condemning, and you can't condemn them all, because there's too many of them, is roofing. Now, I can guarantee you one thing, you don't have to have a college degree to be a rooper. Heck, most of them don't even have a high school degree. But one thing you have to have to be a good rooper is the ability of hand and eye coordination with the nails and those tacks. It takes practice. So what I'm saying to you city councilmen, to show some leadership, get together different groups, like the schools, and I might add, south and north to be in this, and get a bunch of kids together that want to learn how to repair, or be a construction worker, or whatever, or a rooper, learn the trade, and go out and make it possible by having different groups buy these properties, then go fix them up, and then go see if you can figure out a way to get them back on the tax rolls, and help people at the same time. That's all the time I've got now, but that's a fair thing. And I wish that one guy would have been able to say it like I did. But apparently, he couldn't. Well, I did it for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Is there anyone else who would like to make a statement on such an item on the agenda?
Good evening. Pat Goodwin, 2215 North 10th Street. I, for the last about month, have been keeping an eye on the state's Gateway website where financial reports are submitted by cities and counties. An annual financial report is due by every city, town, county in Indiana, 60 days after the end of the year, and so those would have been due by March 2nd, something like that. As of today, the city of Terre Haute still has not submitted their annual financial report. I went ahead and looked around to see if I could find any other community in Indiana that had not yet submitted the annual financial report. I could not find anyone else. So my question is, have you all gotten the annual financial report for 2018? I guess that's a no, okay? Why hasn't it been submitted, and when are we going to see it? And how can you all move forward as a fiscal body without the 2018 financial report? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Any other person who would like to comment on an other agenda item? Okay, we'll then go on with the agenda as it stands. Next item, Michelle?
There are no corrections.
Communications from the mayor?
I did not receive any.
Reports from city officials?
I did not receive any.
Reports from Board of Public Works and Safety?
I did not receive any.
I believe we do have a report on a standing committee?
There should be a copy in front of each of you.
Yes, Councilperson Aller.
Thank you. We held the meeting, and there was three things that came out of the meeting, well, there was a lot more that came out, but there were three major changes that we'd like to see concerning to be part of General Ordinance II 2019. One of it was the setback of the feet from the property line. Another one was change in the amount of hives that they could have for square footage on a lot size. And the third thing was a subsection, just to have like a warning sign saying that there are beehives on the property. With these three changes that we have, they would have to be re-advertised for us to be able to vote on them. So I'm going to ask tonight, when General Ordinance II 2019 comes up, that we withdraw it, and there's some other things that they want to work on, and then we can give it back to Eddie and have him work on the things that needs to be put in there, and I think Martha's got something to say when I get done, and then bring it back where we have everything, so we're not re-advertising these changes, and then have more changes to re-advertise next time. I'd rather see it withdrawn than bring it back to where it's ready to go and ready to vote on. So is that all you have to, council?
Does anybody have any questions for Councilperson Aller on the proposed changes? From council? Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Councilperson Aller and the committee, and all of those, a lot of you are here tonight, but not everyone, all those who came to the committee meeting from both city employees who came and are responsible for code enforcement, and also individuals from the public who came and gave us information, very valuable information and testimony for that committee hearing. I really appreciated that. Along with the report here, some of you who are present will remember that we also had a fairly lengthy discussion about, these changes all relate to the beekeeping part of the ordinance, but we also had a lot of discussion about the possibility of people being allowed to have chickens within the city limits. And that issue, we felt was not quite ready to be, to have legislative language or an ordinance ready for it yet. So what the plan is with that, we did not, we did hear you, and I will be forming an ad hoc committee under our rules to work on a outcome on that, hopefully a consensus of how we might deal with that issue. That's going to be a bigger job, because we need to look at some other ordinances. We have a lot to learn about that possibility before we go forward. So I will be forming that committee. It is not formed yet, but we'll have members of council, we'll have members of the public, and members probably of a few city departments on it. So stay tuned for that. We look that that committee would probably not be in a position to meet until probably about mid-May, but we are moving forward on that. It will not drop, it will go forward. So I just wanted to let council members know that. Yes, Ms. Moore?
And I just want to remind Laurie, if you would, the information that you gave us, we need two more copies of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, when that happens, just for the public's knowledge, when that happens, when that committee does meet, it will be publicly advertised, and you will have an opportunity to be present for that. So does anybody on council have any questions about that process, or something you want to add to it? Okay. Thank you, then. If there's no further discussion about the committee report, we'll move on with the agenda. Oh, council?
Yeah, from a finance perspective, I did ask the mayor this week about the Gateway reports and the year-end financial statements, and I'm paraphrasing as best I can, I don't have the document with me, but he indicated, I believe it was about 80% entered, the data, and it's not released till everything's on there and it's complete, then they release it. And it sounds like next week sometime that will get, all the data will be in, and it will be released.
Did he indicate why it was, why the delay? Did not, okay, thank you.
Not relevant, that's in the past, we can only go forward to May, but we're getting close.
Okay.
Fortunately, we haven't been asked to make any significant financial decisions since February 28th, when that should have been out there.
Thank you for your update on that. Any other reports from committee chairs? Or, okay. Michelle, next item on the agenda.
There are no reports from non-standing committees.
Items previously tabled.
General Ordinance II 2019, amending City Code, Chapter 6, Article 4, Division 2, Animal Control Regulations.
I believe that we-
This has previously been tabled, so we will only need a motion to withdraw in a second and a vote. I'm sorry, Mr. Cullen, did you have a second?
Yes, Councilperson Aller.
Make a motion to withdraw General Ordinance II 2019 as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilperson Aller, and a second by Councilperson Morris to withdraw General Ordinance II 2019. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
President Croson may make a quick statement.
Yes.
I plan to have that refiled by next Friday, which is the deadline for the first May meeting, and I was just, for those that are here on that particular ordinance, I don't know the exact date that will be back.
I believe it's the May 2nd.
So for members of the public, we plan on having that back on the agenda on May 2nd's meeting. If you have any input, would like to come back for that.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Okay. Next agenda item, items on first reading.
Special Ordinance 5 2019, rezoning the property located at 417, 451, 4069 East Margaret Drive. You have proposed amendment before you, and area planning gave a favorable recommendation with conditions.
Okay. And I apologize, I think I said items on first reading, this is actually an item on second reading, but for the petitioners.
Good evening, Madam President, fellow members of the council. My name is Richard Sagley, I'm with the law firm of Wright, Sagley &amp; Lowery, and tonight I'm here on behalf of the petitioners. For simplicity in the application, I call it Property 1, which is Church of Christ, Property 2, John Edwards, and Property 3, Johnny Amelva Edwards. They're petitioning for the rezoning of their properties from R1 to C3. Just for a point of reference, for the last two years, I think I've been in front of you three times, rezoning properties that have bought this property. They're currently building the new John Deere dealership there, you can see it, the overpass there at Margaret and Fruit Ridge. As you may recall, we rezoned that C3 as well. You might remember the Edwards attending those meetings, I don't know if you remember that enough, but, you know, they were interested parties. They, like the rest of us, I think, see what's coming, especially with the opening of Margaret Avenue. You know, the traffic is flowing down Margaret, and I think that's obviously only going to continue as planned. That's all becoming commercialized. The Edwards missed out on opportunity a couple months back, and due to the fact their property was not zoned for commercial, they lost out to someone because their competitors were ready to go, which triggered them to seek rezoning of Properties 2 and 3. They were going to leave the Church of Christ for a later time, but then, once we got into it in a C3, because of the setbacks, they determined that it'd be better just go ahead and rezone the Church of Christ property, which kind of created one of the amendments. So, but then, of course, that triggered another problem, in that you can't have a church in a commercial property. So we had to go in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals and request a special use for a church, which was granted. The other triggering fun fact is, because of the commercial, their gravel lot now needs to be hard-serviced. As you can imagine, like I'd say, most churches in our community, paving their parking lot is a capital expense most aren't prepared to pay. Then, when you throw in the fact that, you know, tomorrow, or in two months, or six months, the property might be sold, that's for a commercial use that I suspect won't need that parking lot, it's really adding no value to the property, and really, just then a, again, unnecessary capital expense. So they asked for variance from that as well, and the Board of Zoning Appeals granted that and allowed them a year to leave it as a rock drive. So we've, we have, we satisfied the requests of the Area Plan Department. We have, we had to amend this due to a, the beacon's a little tricky sometimes, and apparently, one of these pieces of property, the back quarter, was zoned agricultural, so we had to add that little piece of the agricultural, that's the amendment. So tonight, I'm here requesting that these three pieces of property be rezoned from R1 to C3, and that also the Edwards are permitted to continue to reside on the properties until the properties are sold. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on Special Ordinance 5? Council? Any questions for?
Madam President?
Yes.
Maybe I'm just not remembering correctly, but I can't remember the last speculative rezoning that we, that this council's considered. Can somebody tell me if we've ever done anything like this before? Richard?
We actually did one of the, we did two of these last year for the property on, at Margaret and 13th Street, right by the railroad track, there's two big parcels, and back-to-back, or within six months, we rezoned both those from residential to commercial for this same purpose.
Okay, thank you. Are you?
Any other questions for anyone in council? So for us to take action on this tonight, we would need to amend it.
It's already been amended.
It's already been amended, but we need to-
Sorry, Mr. Sagley, what you presented to the council's never been amended.
Okay.
You do need to amend it.
So we do need to amend it to include-
Presented, there should be a copy before all of you.
I'm sorry, there should be what?
A copy before each of you.
Of the amended?
Yes.
Which has the agricultural piece.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
If there's no further discussion, I move that we amend Special Ordinance 5 2019 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Aller, and seconded by Councilperson Nasser, that we amend Special Ordinance 5 2019 as presented. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Councilperson Aller?
I make a motion that we approve Special Ordinance 5 2019 as amended.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Aller, and seconded by Councilperson Nasser, that we approve Special Ordinance 5 2019 as amended.
With the caveat that they can reside in the residences until the properties are sold. That would be the only, I don't know how you want to handle that.
The council can only rezone the property.
We can only rezone-
They can't get permission to-
No.
Okay, I'll figure that out.
I think that'd be a BZI issue.
Yeah.
So with the caveat that Attorney Sagley will figure that out, we will now vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes, Special Ordinance 5 has passed.
Thank you very much. I'm still surprised I raised my hand at the council, but thank you very much, and that you got called on.
I know. And I knew the answer, that was the key.
Okay. Next item of business, items on first reading now, I think we're up.
General Ordinance 3 2019, amending City Code, Chapter 10, Article 1, Unified Flood Plane Control Ordinance. Area Planning gave a favorable recommendation.
Someone's going to speak as petitioner here?
No, I appreciate it. Good evening, councilpersons. My name is Jared Baylor. I am the executive director for the Vigo County Area Planning Office. It's so good to finally put faces with all the names that I've heard of in the past. Myself and Sybil Shahar are here in support of the new flood plane ordinance. I'll give you a brief background. Last fall, we were approached by the state of Indiana, and in a meeting we had with them, they informed us that the residents of Vigo County, as well as those of the city of Terre Haute, were in jeopardy of losing their ability to gain flood insurance. They also informed us that the residents of Vigo, actually, Vigo County as a whole, was in jeopardy of no longer being able to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. So we quickly decided that this is something we wanted to continue to do, so we asked them, what do we need to do to resolve this issue? And they said, the simplest thing for you to do would be to adopt a new flood plane ordinance. So they sent us a model ordinance, we reviewed it, and decided it was not going to really work for us. So we put together a select committee from the Area Plan Commission, we hired two technical consultants that are certified flood plane managers, and we went through the code, line by line, and addressed some of the language within the code that we felt was overly burdensome, and that being to the citizens of, well, the city of Terre Haute, as well as Vigo County, as well as to developers in the region. After our review, the committee approved it, we sent it off to the state, the state approved it, sent it back to us. So what you have here before you this evening is an ordinance that has been approved by the state of Indiana to meet all minimum state and federal guidelines for participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. The same ordinance that you have before you is a mirror of what we are confident the commissioners will be passing on Monday, and will go before West Terre Haute on the 8th, Sealyville on the 9th, and Riley on May the 6th. So we will have, within all jurisdictions within Vigo County, the same flood control ordinance, okay? So I am happy to answer any questions you may have, I'm sure Eddie can answer some as well, and just in case I need backup, if they are flood plant administrators for Vigo County is here with me this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Eddie, do you want to make some comments as well?
Just briefly, I want to just note that I know everybody from Area Planning spent a lot of time with us, and I want to thank them for their help. And I also want to thank, I know there's not a DNR representative here, but they were very good about being patient with us. The best part about this, as Jared mentioned, is that it's going to be comprehensive for everybody in the county, and so I would urge that this be passed. Thanks.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on General Ordinance 3? Please state your name and address.
My name is Donald Hyde, and this is, again, one of the things I spent a year and a half talking about. I sat here and listened, I have a college degree, in fact, I've got more than one of them, and even I didn't understand what I was hearing. But I do know, because I've lived in the city of Terre Haute and Vigo County my entire life, what flood plane is and what flood insurance is. What I want to know, and I did not hear anybody mention, is the maps. Have you updated the flood plane maps? Did anybody look at these maps? And if they hadn't been updated, wouldn't it be a priority, before you pass something, that you actually update the maps? And I'll tell you what I mean by that, sir, ladies and gentlemen. The Wild Bash River moves. It does not stay in the same place. It moves. And lately, it's moved a great deal. In the last 20, 25 years, it's moved not by feet, but by half miles, in some areas, almost a mile. People owned property and would have to walk to the see the river. Now they own property, and they own up- Now they own property and they open up the front door and there's the river. In 10 more years, that house may be gone. The flood, the rain causes flood. Now, add global warming to this, whether you believe in it or not, I do believe that weather patterns change. And when you're talking about floods and flood insurance and where to build homes so that they don't flood, you might want to keep up those maps. So before you have any kind of new ordinance, get the right information. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak on special ordinance, excuse me, general ordinance number three? Counsel? Yes. Mr. Nasser?
Jared, I appreciate, I know you've been working hard on this with the committee and so forth, on getting this together, and I just think this is a perfect example of one of many things that we need to do to unify our codes between, you know, city and county and stuff. I know you said that the other cities are going to be voting on that here in the next week or two, so I appreciate that. With there being no other questions or comments, I make a motion that we act on general ordinance three, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved and, well, we have, you made a motion that we vote to vote? Okay, okay. I just want to, I, I'm sorry. I was listening carefully, but I wasn't sure. Okay. It has been, and for the public, this is on first reading, so we have to vote, that we can vote on our first reading, that's what's happening. So it's been moved by Councilperson Nasser, seconded by Councilperson Morris, that we vote to vote on general ordinance three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Amy Oller is second.
Amy Oller is a second. I'm sorry, I am very confused. My apologies to everyone. All those in favor say aye again.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Madam President?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve general ordinance three, 2019 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Nasser and seconded by Councilperson Devine that we approve general ordinance three, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes and general ordinance three is approved. Thank you to county staff and city staff who worked hard on this, we appreciate it and I'm sure our citizens will too. Hopefully, they won't have any reason to be very soon, but nevertheless. Okay. Next item of business.
Special ordinance seven, 2019, vacating a portion of north-south public alley located north of 8th Avenue, south of Plum Street, west of 40th Street, east of Fruit Ridge Avenue. Problems were noted by engineering departments.
Is there a petitioner on this matter?
Mr. Shagley is the petitioner on this. There he is.
Yeah, this, there, there was an issue. I've been working with the city engineer's office. What I would ask is, so this, this is a property surpro, they want to expand and build a building, they own the property behind their building, and there's a city alley between it. Our original plan was to vacate the portion behind their building, maybe do a cul-de-sac to avoid the dead end, but because of the radius, that's not possible. So then do a alley extension on the south side of the new building, so there wouldn't be a dead end, but technically, there'd still be a dead end building because of 510 Fruit Ridge Avenue, which is the alarm company there. So I've spoken to representatives of the alarm company, and we're going to vacate their portion, so when you go down the alley and you take the left to go towards 40th Street, there won't be a dead end. So we're going to file that alley vacate within, like, for next Friday. So what I'd ask is to table this, and then we'll do them both at the same time next month.
So I think the procedure would be for us to vote, to vote, and then vote to table. So leave that to, unless council has any questions for Mr. Shagley.
Are we doing it as a council?
Someone wants to-
I move that we vote to take action on special ordinance seven.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Azar and seconded by Councilperson Nasser that we vote to take action on special ordinance seven, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I vote that we table special ordinance seven till which meeting you are.
Did the petitioner-
The first meeting in May or second?
May 2nd or May 9th?
Uh, I serve at the pleasure of the council. Whatever you prefer.
December 4th. Go ahead.
I guess I should have been more careful. May 2nd's fine.
May 2nd.
All right, move to table this to May 2nd.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilperson Azar and seconded by Councilperson Oller.
I apologize, can we amend that and go tonight? Is that possible?
Can we amend that go tonight?
Fine.
Sorry about that.
All right, May 9th.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and amended by Councilperson Azar and seconded by Councilperson Oller that we vote to table special ordinance seven, 2019 until May 9th, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Tabled until May 9th. Next item of business.
Special ordinance eight, 2019, rezoning a property located at 2400 Spring Clean Avenue. Area planning gave a favorable with conditions recommendation.
Petitioner?
Good evening, Madam President, fellow members of the council. My name is Richard Shagley, I'm with Wright, Shagley &amp; Lowery, and tonight, I'm representing the petitioner, Munchen LLC. Munchen LLC owns and described property there on, at 2400 Spring Clean Avenue. It's currently zoned C3. The petitioner is requesting zoned to C3. This was heard last night, area plan was giving a favorable recommendation. I don't know how familiar you are with this piece of property, this is currently a vacant lot that sits next to existing storage units owned by the petitioner. It's his hope to expand those storage units and have one big block of storage units. We've not heard any complaints, and as stated, last night, area plan, it was giving a favorable recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on special ordinance eight, Counsel?
Madam President?
Yes.
Mr. Shagley, did you say you wanted it zoned C3?
I'm sorry, C5. 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 It's currently zoned C3.
And this is on its second reading, Michelle?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I make a motion, Madam President, that we vote on special ordinance eight, 2019 as first reading. Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Garrison and seconded by Councilperson Oller, I believe, that we vote on special ordinance eight, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Madam President? Make a motion, we approve special ordinance eight, 2019 as amended. Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Garrison and seconded by Councilperson Morris that we approve special ordinance eight, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Any other business, Madam Clerk?
Okay, I move to adjourn.
Second. It's been moved by Councilperson Azar, seconded by Councilperson Oller, that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.